Out before dawn.
I, I, I don't know, I weigh here 938.
See, I was thinking 10 if you were watching.
Why not be that close? We're down there.
Smart city, smart water. That's what I want.
You're brilliant. You're brilliant.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Seven o'clock. Ready when you are, Madam President.
I'm going to call the City Council Caucus to order for April 24th, 2017. We have two public hearings this evening. If the clerk would please read.
Public hearing number one regarding the 2017-2018 Proposed Action Plan and CDBG Funding.
And, public hearing number two.
Public hearing number two regarding the ceremonial renaming of a section of North J Street.
And under original consideration, we have 21 items. If the clerk would please read item number one.
Item number one, an ordinance amending Chapter 186 to allow setting of cricket field rental fees by resolution. Introduced only with a resolution calling for a public hearing on May 8th, 2017.
And that was discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number two.
Item number two, a resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Finance to deposit the consolidated local street and highway improvement program funding.
Also discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number three has been pulled. Item number four.
Item number four, a resolution authorizing the sale of 1605 Becker Street.
And that was discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number five.
Item number five, a resolution authorizing the sale of 930 Davis Terrace.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number six.
Item number six, a resolution authorizing the sale of 801 Locust Avenue.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number seven.
Item number seven, a resolution authorizing the sale of 7 Frank Street.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number eight.
Item number eight, a resolution authorizing the City of Schenectady as lead agency for sidewalks on McClellan Street and Grand Boulevard Project.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number nine.
Item number nine, a resolution authorizing the City of Schenectady as lead agency for the Central Park Downtown Trail Connection.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number 10.
Item number 10, a resolution authorizing reimbursement of fees to crossing guards.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number 11.
Item number 11, a resolution reappointing Richard Ruzo to the Capital District Land Bank.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number 12.
Item number 12, a resolution authorizing settlement of Savoy City v. City of Schenectady.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number 13.
Item number 13, a resolution asking Schenectady County legislators to repeal the law allowing sale of fireworks in Schenectady.
And that was discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number 14.
Item number 14, a resolution seeking support from congressional representatives for repair of the Oak Street Bridge.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number 15.
Item number 15, a resolution endorsing the need for comprehensive immigration reform.
And item number 15, yes Ms. Porterfield, will be a roll call vote. Item number 16.
Item number 16, a resolution recognizing the 108th anniversary of Dury A.M.E. Zion Church.
And that will be taken out of order and presented by Ms. Porterfield. Item number 17.
Item number 17, a resolution recognizing the National Day of Prayer.
Also taken out of order and presented by Mr. Palamini. Item number 18.
Item number 18, a resolution recognizing National Muslim Soup Kitchen Day.
Taken out of order and presented by Ms. Porterfield. Item 19.
Item number 19, a resolution recognizing Arbor Day.
Taken out of order and presented by Mr. Riggi. Item number 20.
Item number 20, a resolution recognizing the Union College Hockey Team for winning the Mayor's Cup.
Taken out of order, presented by Ms. Zaluski Wazunas. And item number 21.
Item number 21, a resolution celebrating Earth Day.
Taken out of order and presented by Mr. Mutu Verin. We also have three items under contract and supply. If the clerk would please read.
Item number 22, under contract and supply, a resolution accepting the bid and awarding the contract for installation of emergency aftermarket equipment for the Schenectady Police Department.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number 23.
Item number 23, a resolution accepting the bid and awarding the contract for uniforms and accessories for the Schenectady Fire Department.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number 24.
Item number 24, a resolution accepting the bid and awarding the contract for sodium hypochlorite.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. If there's nothing else to come before the City Council Caucus meeting, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Mr. Mutu Verin, seconded by Ms. Zaluski Wazunas. All those in favor, aye. We are adjourned. I will now call the City Council meeting to order for Monday, April 24th, 2017. I will ask that you please rise for the invocation from Father Jean Gavostis of St. George's Greek Orthodox Church.
Oh God, most pure and author of all creation, we thank you for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us. We thank you for the ability to be involved in this useful work for this wonderful city. We ask for your guidance in granting this council wisdom in its decisions, the ability to always work together even when in disagreement, and a sense of justice in doing what is right. We ask for your continued blessings on all those here today and all of their loved ones. This we ask in your name for your holy now and always and unto the ages of ages. Amen.
I'll ask Rabbi Matthew Cutler to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If the clerk would please call the roll.
Mr. Kosher.
Here.
Ms. Porterfield.
Here.
Ms. Zaluski Wazunas.
Here.
Mr. Palamini.
Here.
Mr. Riggi.
Here.
Mr. Mutu Verin.
Present.
Ms. Perazo.
Present. I'll ask Ms. Porterfield to present a ceremonial resolution recognizing the 180th anniversary of Dury A.M.E. Zion Church.
Yes, the pastor and Mr. Davenport also to come forward, please. Madam President.
You have the floor.
A resolution recognizing the 180th anniversary of Dury Memorial A.M.E. Zion Church. Whereas, in the early part of 1837, Isaac G. Dury, a young man and student at Union College, became greatly interested in colored people because of their fervent spirit of freedom of religious worship. He conducted Sabbath School for the Negro children on Clinton Street. And that same year, Isaac G. Dury purchased a piece of property on Lower Franklin Street on which to erect a small church building and gave it to the colored people. And whereas, Dury Memorial A.M.E. Zion Church was then established, initially known as the African Church, becoming the first black church in the City of Schenectady. And whereas, the first church located in 116 J Street was a framed structure with a basement. The first pastor of the church was Reverend Isaac Dury. And whereas, in 1855, the Dury Memorial African Methodist Episcopal Church achieved another first, becoming home to the first free school for colored children. Thirty-seven Negro children were known to have registered at school. And whereas, in November 1907, the church purchased the current church location on Hewlett Street. The new church and furnishings cost over $9,000. In 1908, the church celebrates its first anniversary at their new home located on Union Street. And whereas, in 2012, Reverend Ruby J. Smith, the then-presiding elder of the Albany District, was appointed pastor of the church, a role in which he continues to serve. Now, therefore be resolved that the Schenectady City Council and the mayor, Gary R. McCarthy, pause in their deliberations to recognize Dury A.M.E. Zion Church as the oldest black church in the City of Schenectady and congratulate the church, the pastor, and the congregation on their 180th church anniversary. I'd like to move the resolution.
Moved by the presenter, seconded by Mr. Mutu Verin. All those in favor, aye.
To the council president, Lisa Peraza, to the Honorable Mayor, Gary McCarthy, and all of the members of this great Schenectady City Council. On behalf of the Dury Memorial A.M.E. Zion Church and the pastor, Ruby Smith, we just immensely appreciate the honor to receive this resolution from this great council. Thank you, and thank you, and may God bless you. Yes. I would like to cordially invite all of you to our May 5th banquet, the 180th anniversary of the church banquet that will be held at Malasse's in Schenectady, New York on May 5th at 6:00 PM. You're cordially invited. Thank you.
While you're there, Ms. Porterfield, I'll ask that you present the ceremonial resolution recognizing National Muslim Soup Kitchen Day also. I believe we have representatives here.
Yeah, do we have representatives who receive the resolution? Okay. Oh, okay. You got enough support now you're good? Madam President.
You have the floor.
A resolution recognizing National Muslim Soup Kitchen Day. Whereas, the Muslim community of the Capital District is a community of interfaith outreach and volunteer spirit, expressed through the work of the Muslim Soup Kitchen Project, MSKP. And whereas, since 2003, MSKP has been achieving their mission to create unity through serving humanity by providing monthly meals at area shelters and other venues. Holding community donation drives for items such as fresh food, clothing, toiletries, and toys, and distributing fresh meat to needy families in the Capital District. And whereas, MSKP seeks to provide a mechanism by which the local Muslim community can connect and serve the larger community of the Capital District by supporting a largely non-Muslim clientele and partnering with people of all faiths, backgrounds, and communities. And whereas, April 2017 marks MSKP's Second Annual National Muslim Soup Kitchen Day, where volunteers from across the country will unite to make sure that no one in their communities go hungry. Now, therefore be it resolved that April 29th, 2017 is proclaimed the National Muslim Soup Kitchen Day in the City of Schenectady, and the city thanks MSKP for the dedication to the community and people in need. I'd like to move the resolution.
Moved by the presenter, seconded by Mr. Mutu Verin. All those in favor, aye.
Honorable Mayor and members of the committee, we couldn't, as the Muslim community of Capital Region, we couldn't be more grateful for our community. We have the most generous people and the most kind-hearted people I've ever, and I've been to a couple of countries, so. We've, we have the most kind-hearted people I've ever witnessed to have around me, and it's such an honor to be part of this Capital Region community and especially of Schenectady. The National Muslim Soup Kitchen Day, we are serving in the Schenectady region, and we will be serving this weekend. And we're serving about 1,000 meals. So, we will be serving at, one of the organizations will be City Mission, and we will be there from 11:30 to 12:30. While, there's two other organizations we will be serving at with lots of words. And we would just like to thank you for this opportunity and be able to help our own community and our neighbors because we are this community and there's no place else we would rather be. Thank you.
Next, I'll ask Mr. Palamini to present the National Day of Prayer ceremonial resolution.
Madam Chair.
You have the floor.
This is a resolution observing May 4th, 2017 as the National Day of Prayer. Whereas, throughout our nation's history, prayer has given strength and comfort to Americans of all faiths. Our founding fathers relied on their faith to help them build our democracy. And whereas, Americans of different faiths share the profound conviction that God listens to his children and pours his grace upon those who seek him in prayer. By surrendering our lives to our loving Father, we are strengthened, refreshed, our hearts humbled, and our lives transformed. And whereas, God has blessed us beyond measure, and today we continue to be blessed by God's mercy, boundless love, and his care of our country and our city. We are grateful for our freedom, and we give thanks to our families and the loved ones for an abundant land and the fruits of labor. We acknowledge our need for his wisdom and grace and ask him to continue to watch over our country and city. And whereas, in this contentious time in our history, Americans are bowing humbly in churches, synagogues, temples, mosques, and in their own homes in the presence of the Almighty, asking for the strength to meet the challenges before us, for wisdom to know and do what is right, for continued determination to work towards making our society a more compassionate and decent place. We pray for those who are suffering and face hardships and for peace throughout the world. Whereas, remembering the words of St. Paul, "Be anxious for nothing but in everything by prayer and supplication; with thanksgiving let your requests be made known to God; and that we should rejoice always, pray without ceasing, in everything give thanks." And whereas, this year's theme is for your great name's sake, hear us, forgive us, heal us. And whereas, Congress by public law 100-307 has called on our nation to reaffirm the role of prayer in our society and to respect the freedom of religion by recognizing each year a National Day of Prayer. Now, therefore be it resolved that the City of Schenectady celebrates May 4th, 2017 as a National Day of Prayer and encourages Schenectadians, according to his or her own faith, to pray for God's protection, to give thanks for the blessings we have received, and to seek God's guidance, comfort, and protection, and to join in observing this day with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. I'd like to move this motion.
Moved by the presenter, seconded by Ms. Porterfield. All those in favor, aye.
So this is, this is Robert Naylor. He's known me my entire life, literally. And, but also, I asked him to come tonight to receive this resolution because he and a group of his friends come every Thursday and pray for the city and our country and representatives.
It was, I believe, about 16 years ago when Mr. Herzog, at that time, he wasn't a bishop yet, at that time approached Al Gudzinski and requested here, if it was possible, to have men of prayer, pastors, laymen, anybody here that was interested in praying for this city and actually the area. And so, that's when it started, 16 years ago. And I'd like to let you know here that it's been a wonderful time that we have gathered in this place every Thursday morning to pray for the people in leadership, the chief of police, the head of the school systems, all of the, all of the city council here, and many others here. Anybody here in leadership, the scriptures tell us that we should pray for those people that have positions of leadership, and we've been faithfully doing that. It's very, very seldom, it's rare actually, when we're not here. So even though you may not be here, we are here Thursday morning, praying for you, for all of you. And we just thank you for that privilege. We thank you that the place is open to us. We thank you for the court people here that get everything ready for us when we come up here, that we can get into this room and have this time of prayer. I believe here is at least, I think to a great degree, that everyone here has been invited. I know most of the mayors have been talked to in the past here and asked if they would like to come. We would always enjoy having you here. And so, we just thank the Lord for this. We believe in prayer, and we hope that it will continue for a long time. And we want to thank you very much.
Mr. Riggi will now present the ceremonial resolution recognizing Arbor Day.
All the tree huggers, step forward. I got to know many of these people about, probably about 20 years ago, or better than 20 years ago now. Mike and I planted a bunch of trees on the side of Hillhurst Park. They're still standing except for one, yeah. Yeah, it's a long time, so. Okay, this is a resolution celebrating April 28th as Arbor Day, Madam President.
You have the floor.
Thank you. Whereas, Arbor Day is unique from other holidays because instead of celebrating an event that has already occurred, it reflects a hope for the future. And whereas, the first Arbor Day was celebrated by J. Sterling Morton in the state of Nebraska on April 10th, 1872. It is now celebrated by the state of New York every year on the last Friday of the month of April. And whereas, Arbor Day celebrates the role of trees in our daily lives and helps to emphasize how valuable trees are as a component of our environment. And whereas, trees represent a vital biological tool that can control water and wind erosion, provide a habitat for birds and wildlife, and naturally improve air quality. And whereas, the City of Schenectady continues to hope in its own future by actively working with community groups such as Re-Tree Schenectady and others to promote environmental awareness. Now, therefore be it resolved that the mayor, Gary R. McCarthy, and the city council do hereby pause in their deliberations to recognize Friday, April 28th, 2017 as Arbor Day in the City of Schenectady and thereby encourage our citizens to engage in the celebration of Arbor Day by planting trees as a source of future enjoyment and civic pride. Madam President, I move this resolution.
Moved by the presenter, seconded by Ms. Zaluski Wazunas. All those in favor, aye.
Betsy Henry couldn't be here today. She's the president of Re-Tree. She's out of town. So I'm, I'm here to speak on behalf of Re-Tree Schenectady. I want to take this opportunity to thank the City Council, to thank the mayor and his staff, and to thank Vince for sponsoring this resolution through the years. As many of you may or may not know, having an Arbor Day resolution and also a Tree City resolution has, in the past, and probably will continue to be, one of the criteria for some of the grants that we've gotten through the years. So it helps us to fund the purchase of trees. Just wanted to give thanks. I'd be remiss if I didn't remember, Joe Vitale did a lot of good work for us and recently retired from the city. And he was very instrumental in setting up, you know, programs and trees and assisting us and working with our main man here, Stan Hickock, over the years, who I'd also be remiss if I didn't point out that, you know, he's been the driving force, both him and Joe Vitale. So, we're gonna miss Joe now that he's retired, so there's gonna be some pretty big shoes to fill, so I hope somebody can step up for that. And the rest of us will continue as we can, hopefully in this partnership with government and Re-Tree Schenectady and the volunteers and neighborhood groups throughout the years of what we planted many trees in the city. Like to also, I wanted to give one, for sponsoring the resolutions over the years, we've got a little present here from Vince. Lorax by Dr. Seuss. So I don't know if anybody of you've read this book before. But the Lorax. Vince has been kinda like the Lorax here for us, as we all have been. Because what he's, the Lorax tries to save the Chufu Fella trees. And, and so that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to save the trees. So I give that to you, and in recognition. There you go. We signed it all too. It's signed on the inside cover, so won't take too much more of your time. We've got Stan, Susan, Jackie, Susan, Matt, Jeff showed up, and we've got Gary. So we got the whole group here. I don't know if anybody else wants to say anything, but I just wanted to say thanks again. I guess I said it all, so. Thanks again and hopefully continue this partnership together. Thank you.
I'll ask Ms. Zaluski Wazunas to present the ceremonial resolution recognizing the Union College Hockey Team for winning back the Mayor's Cup where it belongs.
Step right in. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Madam President?
You have the floor.
A resolution recognizing the Union College Hockey Team for winning the fifth annual Mayor's Cup. Whereas, Union Hockey, College Men's Hockey Team has a tradition of excellence. And whereas, an exciting and historic rivalry exists between Union College Dutchmen and the Rensselaer Polyethnic Institute Engineers. And whereas, the rivalry has a following throughout the capital region, which led to the creation of the Mayor's Cup in 2013. And whereas, the Dutchmen were able to return the cup to the City of Schenectady with a victory over RPI on January 19th, 2017. And whereas, Union was tied with RPI with goals by first-year Luke Brown and Anthony Rinaldi, but achieved a three to two overtime victory with sophomore Cole Mayer scoring the winning goal thirty-three seconds into overtime. Woo-hoo! Was very, very exciting. Now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor Gary R. McCarthy and the City Council do hereby pause in their deliberations to recognize the Union College Men's Hockey Team as the winners of the fifth annual Mayor's Cup and as continuing source of pride to the City of Schenectady. Madam President?
Moved by the presenter, seconded by Mr. Palamene. All those in favor? Aye.
I am Eric McDowell from the Union College Athletic Department with my assistant Dan St. Jacques, and I want to introduce our star student athletes, and I say student athletes as well, they're excellent. We have Ryan Scarfo and our captain for next year and our hero of the Mayor's Cup game, Cole Mayer. We have a beautiful trophy case downstairs that's been very lonely, so it's now going to have the company that it originally deserves. And after being on loan, it is back where it belongs. We thank our city council members who joined us on the ice this year. We look forward to Mayor McCarthy joining us on the ice next year with our captain and his teammates to make sure the cup comes back home. And finally, Mayor McCarthy and to the city council members, thank you for the remarkable job you do in serving all of us in this fair city. Thank you.
I'm pretty sure that's the only time I've ever said woo-hoo into this microphone. Lastly, Mr. Mutiveran will present a resolution celebrating Earth Day.
A resolution celebrating April the 22nd, 2017, and that's Earth Day. Madam President?
You have the floor.
Whereas, the first Earth Day was celebrated forty-seven years ago by millions of Americans. And whereas, these ordinary citizens, having witnessed years of environmental neglect, gather in street, parks, and college, college campuses to demand change and commitment for a healthier planet. These citizens fought for air, water, and wildlife protection, leading to the creation of the Environmental Protection Agency and the passage of the Clean Air Act, the Clean Water Act, and the Endangered Species Act. And whereas, today our planet faces climate change that will have profound impact on all humankind, threatening future generation with more severe weather disaster, longer wildfire season, adverse growing condition for agriculture, and climate-related public health effect. And whereas, the City of Schenectady is committed to our role as a leader in fighting climate change and improving our environmental quality by changing the way we consume energy, boosting energy efficiency in our building and cars, protecting our resource by recycling as part of our everyday routine, speaking out in support of policies that protect our environment while strengthening our economy and creating a more sustainable community. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Schenectady celebrates April the 22nd, 2017, as Earth Day by encouraging every person, a caretaker of our planet, to fight climate change and protect the earth by participating in programs and activity that will protect our environment and contribute to a healthier, sustainable future. Madam President?
Moved by the presenter, seconded by Ms. Zaluzki Wodzunas. All those in favor? Aye.
My name is Angelina Pioni. I'm the recycling educator with Cornell's Cooperative Extension here in Schenectady County, and I am so excited to join the effort to make Schenectady County a more environmentally conscious community, a more sustainable place to live. The new recycling education program with Cornell that I coordinate is centered on public outreach initiatives to raise awareness about recycling issues, to connect recycling to natural resource conservation, and to teach people that recycling greatly reduces the pollution that leads to global climate change. So, my program does focus on families and children in Schenectady County communities, but it's also my goal to reach businesses and landlords and local institutions that want to learn more about improving their recycling program and having waste reduction be a core value to their business. So, I'm very excited to meet with community groups and event organizers and schools throughout the county and help them connect people to the resources that they need to make waste reduction part of their daily life and part of their core values as a citizen to Schenectady County. So, thank you very much for passing the Earth Day resolution, and I invite you all to follow my page on Facebook, Schenectady County Recycles. You can learn more about waste reduction, how to improve your life through recycling, through composting, through safely disposing of your household hazardous waste. So, thank you very much again for the Earth Day resolution. I want to remind you all that we can make a difference. We can make Earth Day every single day when we choose to recycle.
Okay, onto our first public hearing. If the clerk would please read.
Public hearing number one regarding the 2017-2018 Proposed Action Plan and CDBG Funding.
Before we get to the actual hearing, I would like to ask our deputy finance commissioner to come up and just give the public a little more information, Mr. Curtis Eetman.
Thank you. Good evening. Again, my name is Curtis Eetman and I am the deputy commissioner of finance. I'm currently fulfilling the many duties of the director of development, a challenging yet rewarding experience. Let me begin by welcoming everyone here to our public hearing. Winston Marcellus once said, "We always hear about the rights of democracy, but the major responsibility of it is participation." That is why we are here tonight, to seek your participation. On April 3rd, 2017, the Department of Development presented the 2017-2018 Proposed Annual Action Plan. In that presentation, per HUD guidelines, a public hearing is required. Tonight, we want to receive your feedback regarding the plan which was submitted on April 3rd, 2017. Your comments and concerns are vital part of this process. This year total proposed funding is $2,710,973. The proposed allocations may change based on the 2018 federal proposed budget. The annual allocations of the federal funding we are proposing is through the Community Block Grant for $2,67,628, the Home Investment Partnership Program, HOM, for $457,457, and the Emergency Solutions Grant, ESG, for $185,888. Again, I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight and letting your voices be heard. Remember, your participation in this process helps guide the decisions that affect our city, the quality of our lives, of our citizens, and our democratic process. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Eetman. Our first speaker this evening is Petey Vorus.
My name is Petey Vorus and I live in the city. I was here for that April 3rd meeting. It was a presentation. However, we don't know what the council did as far as cutting, adding, or cutting to it. And I was hoping that we would have a list of those that were going to participate in it and whether they were going to, or how much they were going to get and whether was there any variance from last year's awards. So, not having that information, I would like to see it. I'm shocked that it's not online, nor even a copy of it in today's agenda. I am going to be in opposition to the payments in total because I am opposed to any amounts being paid to CDBG at this time. I have an issue with code that is over two and a half years old. They will not address it, and the latest information as of this afternoon is they are pushing it off to SCAP. I don't think that's appropriate. This is a very serious issue. I've been dealing with it for two and a half years, and I think the city is muscling their way through it, and I don't like that. I have rights, I have checked the law. It is appropriate for code enforcement to act upon my request. So, I've said it, and I'm going to say it again. I think this is just one other thing that this city is muscling their way through. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I do want to say that if the government can't stop CDBG funding, they certainly can't come in here with a receivership and become the bureaucracy that governs it.
Thank you. Reverend Phil Grigsby.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council president, members of the council. I'm Reverend Phil Grigsby. I direct the Schenectady Intercity Ministry, which is Coalition Corrogations, and also I'm a longtime city resident. I wanted to speak about three things very briefly. There's not enough time to talk about the plan in total, so I'll send you some additional comments. First, thanks for the opportunity to testify and to be here this evening and to make comments. Thank you also for the recommendation on the summer food service program that we provide, not only for the city's financial partnership and that, but also the many in-kind ways that you all provide support for this very important and critical summer program, use of the parks, the mayor's presence, and get ready, guys. We've always asked the city to have a team to give out lunches, so get ready, be ready. Be ready with your answer. So that's number one. Thank you. Secondly, a quick word on something not in the public service area, in the economic development area. We've been involved with the Community Loan Fund for a long time, and we're part of the group that pushed them to come here. And I noticed in their application, they made an application for an amount higher than what was recommended. What was recommended is the same amount as this year. And certainly critical in this community is jobs and economic opportunities, so I would ask you to reconsider the increased amount that they're asking. Finally, I ask you for a reconsideration of Sickum's proposal for youth and senior services cafe pilot. We became involved last year after a couple of years before that with the senior long-term care people and also members of disability community who were developing and working on a clear need for a senior center in the City of Schenectady. There are suburban centers, there's not a center in the city. Sickum initiated and developed the Northside Senior Center some years ago. Because we've been around for a while, people forget that that's a lot of what we do. We start things and then sometimes they develop and spinoffs such as Safe House, which we got going, and Bethesda House, which is a splendid anniversary. But Northside Senior was, we were very much involved in, and went to Annie Schaefer Senior Center, and of course, then that center folded. People felt there was not a need for a center for a while, but now they've developed a very clear desire and need for such a center. And the concern they've always had, as we've had, is we really feel strongly that the center needs to be centrally located. It needs to be in a downtown area, which is what we proposed. It's also a best practice, we believe, to combine it both with youth and seniors. Both help each other, it's a best practice seen elsewhere. And meal programs are, need, are best when they're run by seniors and for seniors and with seniors as a cafe. I ask you, as you compare the two proposals, to look very carefully, both at hours of service and cost, and especially location in determining difficult decisions. Finally, we note, as the previous speaker alluded to, the administrative budget may wipe out this program entirely or cut it in half. I certainly would invite the council to do a resolution along that line, and we should do all we can to advocate for this program, which is very important for the City of Schenectady. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Carl Jackson. I'm a member at the Mount Olivet Missionary Baptist Church, and I am a senior. And I am here, I'm advocating, I just want to, just about ditto everything that Reverend Grigsby has said. We are looking for a senior center, and we need one in our district. Our district abuts Union College, and there's nothing there, no senior center, there's not even a recreation center in the area. So, I come before you with a plea to at least consider keeping the funds and our location at 1068 Park Avenue would be ideal for a senior center combined with youth after-school program. The seniors would even have an opportunity to work with the youth, which is always a good thing. Generations connecting. Thank you for your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam President, Mayor McCarthy, members of the city council. My name is Randy Magoo. I'm here to talk about the senior center. I'm pretty much gonna ditto pretty much everything that Phil Grigsby said. We truly believe that we do need a senior center in that part of the City of Schenectady, and we think that we have a good plan of marrying both the youth and the seniors together and helping, helping each other, helping both groups. So whatever can be done to allocate or appropriate the money so that we can have a senior center in that part of the city, we'd greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Madam President Porazo, and thank you to the city council for this opportunity to speak to you this evening, and certainly thank you for all your hard work on behalf of our city. I know you have some very difficult decisions to make, and I respectfully ask for your support so that Habitat for Humanity of Schenectady County can continue our efforts to revitalize our neighborhoods. Schenectady Habitat has been engaged in the city for 24 years, rehabbing old housing, building new construction, and neighborhood revitalization efforts. Specifically tonight, I am asking for your support to continue our efforts on Carey Street. To date, we have completed two one-story houses, and they are owner-occupied, back on the tax rolls. We have two two-story houses, and both of those houses have homeowners interested in them and ready to sign. And I'm asking for support for one more two-story house across the street so we, again, can bring back this wonderful historic neighborhood. Now, so some of you may be aware, Schenectady Habitat experienced a downturn in applications for a few years. Well, through education and outreach, we currently have seventeen applications in-house. There's a great deal of interest in our city, and Schenectady Habitat would be honored to be part of this continued growth. When I drive through the city and I look at the Habitat houses that we have been part of, I see homes that are well-maintained, they're paying their taxes, they're paying their insurances, and they're active members of our community. This administration and this council has proven to be dedicated to bringing back our historic neighborhoods, and we want them to once again be safe, attractive places to live and to raise families. Habitat for Humanity of Schenectady County- Habitat for Humanity of Schenectady County wholeheartedly joins you in this effort. Please allow us to continue to do the work we love to do by providing the important funding to make homeownership a reality for first-time qualified homeowners. And thank you again for your hard work, and also for this time this evening.
Thank you. Linda McFarlane.
Mayor McCarthy, Madam President, city council members. I'm Linda McFarlane, Executive Director of the Community Loan Fund. I wanted to speak with you for less than three minutes on the importance of the work and the impact that the Community Loan Fund has on Schenectady. Our objectives in Schenectady are to provide loans to help promote businesses, to provide loans to expand businesses, to support startup businesses, to provide loans for nonprofit organizations that improve the lives of individuals of low incomes. And across the board, we provide training and technical assistance to help support the businesses and nonprofit organizations. In 2016 and the first quarter of 2017, we made 11 loans in Schenectady. Three of those were to micro entrepreneurs, all of them individuals of low income. One of them was a woman-owned business. The other eight loans were to nonprofit organizations that created six units of affordable housing, 15 slots for youth programming. In all, we loaned $874,000. That leveraged an additional $756,000 from other sources to complete those projects. Those projects created 18 jobs, excuse me, retained 18 jobs and created 16.5 new jobs in Schenectady. Our training and technical assistance provides eight-week business training courses, which we hold two of them a year in Schenectady with 15 to 18 adult students in the class. And we offer a variety of small business workshops. One of them was on the MWBE certification that Councilwoman Porterfield had attended. I bring this to your attention and ask you to please keep this in mind during the distribution of the CDBG funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Miki Khan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam President, and city council members. I'm here to lend my support to the Hamilton Hill Art Center, now in its 49th year, on the edge of celebrating 50 years of service to the community. 50 years means that many of our children who come today are children and grandchildren of people who came through the art center. And to my pleasant surprise, during a number of hospitalizations that my mother had, it seemed like every other person who came into the room to care for her had been a student at the Hamilton Hill Art Center. So, I can say through direct experience that the kids who have gone through the center grow up to become fine adults, contributing members of society. And the opportunities that we give them are just wonderful, opportunities that they cannot receive in the school setting. For example, take something as simple as drumming. Simple to us, but children and adults, out of a drumming experience, learn to listen. They learn to pay attention. They learn how to multitask in the sense of doing one thing with their hands while listening to what the student beside them is doing. They learn to have poise in front of an audience, and they have fun. The art center also provides academic support to the children who come after school. Many of the children have learning disabilities. We have a relationship with Union College, where the college students come and give tutoring and support services. So, I just hope that we are able to continue. Our services are free, and that, of course, means that we don't collect a lot of money from the people who are receiving the services. So, we're grateful for any support that you can give us. It has been through CDBG that we have been able to continue this work for so long. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to read this name with confidence. Ifobayo Arayama Matlock.
Oh, you did that pretty well. You were pretty close, yes.
Share with me how to properly pronounce it.
My, my full name is Ifobayo Arayama Angelina Matlock Abdulla Olumide Egumbumi, but it can't fit on that line.
I'm so grateful that it can't fit on this line.
That's usually an opening for me. People look at my name and go, "What?", you know, so. Good evening, Mayor, Madam President, and fellow city council members. I am the President of the Hamilton Hill Art Center, the Board of Directors for the Hamilton Hill Art Center, and I also work in the community at the Schenectady County School District. I'm here this evening on behalf of the Hamilton Hill Art Center and to actually read a message that the current Executive Director, Rachel Khan, asked for me to present for her. Unfortunately, she's ill, and she's not able to do this for herself. She says, and I'm gonna try to deliver this as she would, "The value and the impact of the Hamilton Hill Art Center cannot be overstated. I've heard countless stories of the lives we've changed, families who develop a sense of pride and fellowship at our community events, teachers who add arts and culture education to their programming because of the knowledge and support of the teachers and the performers we send them. I've heard the stories of children whose access to culturally congruent role models in art programming that highlights the value and accomplishments of their ancestral inheritance, as well as the accomplishments of their peers, has filled them with a sense of stability, confidence, and valuable life perspectives that have carried them throughout their lives. These children have grown up to become artists, engineers, chief of police, teachers, business owners, and so many others. Many have come back to us as art teachers, volunteers, board members, and even directors of the Hamilton Hill Art Center. They come back because we've changed their lives, because we've helped to instill within them a sense of community and the importance of giving back. All this we have done with very little. We have a history of making the most of whatever we have. The art center has managed to sustain itself through 49 years of changing political climates. Our small organization has led the way in cultural programming throughout the capital region. Everywhere that you see African and African-American cultural programming, you will find an art center community member involved. We have introduced the capital region to Kwanzaa in June 10th, with many cultural organizations following in our footsteps. All this we have accomplished with very little. I simply ask for the opportunity to show you what we can do with more. So, please keep this in consideration as you take a look at your CDBG grant schedule. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica Hunter.
Good evening, Mayor, Madam President, city council members. I'm also here to speak on behalf of the Hamilton Art Center. This would be the third time that I come before you. Probably remember my face. I'm a child of the art center myself, but now I've been on the Board of Directors now for almost two years. First, I want to thank you all for your support of the art center in the past. As a board member, I understand the bottom line of the art center and that we need the CDBG to stay open. But as a person who's volunteered for the Art Reach Program for two hours every day for over a year, I absolutely understand that it's vital for us to continue receiving CDBG grant funding. So, I volunteer with our Art Reach Program, which doesn't just involve the arts, as Miki reminded us. We also help these kids with their homework. We help them one-on-one, teach them how to read. Their parents let us know what they need help with, and we set aside volunteers' time to work with each of them. So, the kids get their homework done first, and then we move on to arts. I also teach Moja African Dance and Drumming on Wednesday nights for the kids. And I could go on about that forever, but there's a limited amount of time that we have here. So, I come to you as a voice to add to the lovely ladies here in the front that I'm an example of what comes out of the art center, and I would like to see more of that. And I see every day when I work with these kids what this money means to us. So, I would also like to ask for your consideration for continuing to give us a portion of the CDBG monies. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I meant to ask at the beginning, just because the clipboards, a couple of people came in after the clipboards were collected, did everyone have a chance to sign up that wanted to speak at the CDBG hearing? Okay. So, I have no one else signed up to speak, therefore, I will declare this portion of the meeting closed. And we will move on to our second public hearing. If the clerk would please read.
Public Hearing Number Two, Regarding the Ceremonial Renaming of a Section of North J Street.
Again, I have some people come in after the clipboards were collected. Is there anyone here that wants to speak for the public hearing on the renaming of the portion of J Street? Ms. Fran Lehman? Okay, I'll call you up in order, all right? Is there anybody else? Okay. So, the first person, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Nick Barber.
Nick. And what was your name, sir? Well, you can tell me when you come up. No, I got you, Nick. You're, you're all set. I'll, I'll, I'll call you up. Okay. So, our first speaker tonight is Anthony Carata.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council President. It's often inappropriate that we should honor Don Birch, owner of Sawmill Tavern, because from what I understand, he is the example, example of how we should treat a fellow man. He went out of his way to help the less fortunate in the neighborhood. He went out of his way every Sunday to have a free buffet there for the neighborhood. And also, when the Marines did their toy for tash run, toy for tash, he did a Christmas run. It's often inappropriate that we should do this because, like I said, he's an example of how we should, every day in our lives, help a fellow man.
Thank you. Fran Lehman. Fran?
What else to say? Everybody's gonna say the same thing. He was a great man. Helped everybody out. He was a really dear friend of mine. I miss him, and I really hope this works because I want to be the first person to get a ticket on Don Birch Way. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick Barber.
Thank you. Sorry I didn't get a chance to sign up. My name is Nicholas Barber. I live in the city of Schenectady. And just briefly, I wanted to thank the city, the mayor, President of the Council, and honorable council members for consideration of this, this resolution. Don Birch was a friend of mine for over 30 years. I dealt with him as the County Director of Real Property Tax Services when he ran the CT Nova Bus Company Corporation, when they brought the buses down from Canada to the Hillside Park Complex. He was an amazing person. I, every time I saw him do something in a benevolent way, I was just, I was just astounded. I mean, he dug in his own pocket for over 35 years to help anyone in need. I mean, he really dug sometimes until it hurt. But he set an example. Talk about Pay It Forward. He was probably one of the founders of that. And as I saw him do it over and over again, I always asked myself, "Why does he do it to this extent, so much? You know, put so much out on his own?" And I asked him a question one day, and he said, "Well, it's because of my mother." He was brought up by a single parent. He says, "My mother taught me to always help others in need if I could without hurting myself." And he took it literally, and he took it to the limit. Don was an example of a citizen that added to economic development in the community. He was an amazing mechanic. He worked on the Kenny Rogers tour buses. He managed those projects down south before he came back up here. He was a manager of CT Nova Bus Corporation. And also, he worked at Supersteel as a manager there. And I think one of the saddest days of his life was not because he lost the job, well, they left, it wasn't because of his performance, but because his income was cut and he couldn't, he couldn't do what he did for all those years anymore. The free food and, you know, the benevolent act that he did. But he did continue on Christmas and Easter to put out food. And anytime anyone in need, when they were at their lowest point, regardless of who it was, he would help out. So, he's an example that we'd like to follow. So, when you do this street renaming, and we will look up at that sign, those are the kind of things, I think, that we want to think about. His benevolence in how he helped the community, Little Italy, anytime they needed it, business people, he worked with government. We want to think of Don Birch, and hopefully, we can act, act in the same manner that he did. Thank you very much for your consideration of the resolution.
Thank you. And if you would start by stating your name, sir.
John Wallace, city resident. Good evening, Mayor, city council people. Nick just stole most of my thunder. We have streets named after Georgia Dix Boulevard, Martin Luther King Way, now Donny Birch Way. This is long overdue, and it's gonna be tough to fill his shoes. If we had more people in this city, this would be heaven on earth. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Seeing as I have no one else signed up to speak, I'll declare this portion of the meeting closed. And we will move on to approval of the minutes from April 10th, 2017. Moved by Mr. Mutaviran, seconded by Ms. Luski Wodzunis. All those in favor? Aye. And if the clerk would please read communications and petitions.
Communications presented to the city council for Monday, April 24th, 2017. From the mayor, a list of appointments dated April 24th, 2017. From, excuse me, from Richard McElvery, Acart Purchasing Supervisor, dated April 24th, 2017, recommending the award and the purchase of aftermarket equipment for Schenectady Police Department Teniski Unit Tire and Service Center. From the purchase supervising, dated April 24th, 2017, recommending the award and purchase of uniforms and accessories for the Schenectady Fire Department to United Uniform Company, Inc. From the purchasing supervisor, dated April 24th, 2017, recommending the award and purchase of sodium hypochlorite to surpass Chemical Company. Under general, there are none. Under petitions, there are none.
Committee reports. Anyone? Okay. We'll move on to privilege of the floor related to the legislative agenda. I have 10 people signed up to speak this evening. The first is Mary McLean. Mary McLean.
Item number 15. The topic on tonight's agenda, quote, "The need for comprehensive immigration reform", unquote, does not match the essence to the resolution, which reads, quote, "A fair and welcoming city of Schenectady. Anyone who is not born in the United States is an alien. That means the rest of the world. Do Schenectady's decision-makers intend to welcome the whole world to the city? Where is the room for that? Entrance to this country is no different than applying for admission to an Ivy League school. There are a limited number of seats available. When the seats are filled, enrollment to the school is closed. America's quota system works the same way. When the quota numbers are exhausted, entrance into this country is denied to others." Contrary to tonight's resolution, which reads, "America..." Contrary to tonight's resolution, which reads, "America is a nation for legal immigrants. Anyone who says otherwise is making up stories." The most important word was left out of the resolution, and the word is "legal." Many people entered this country with temporary student visas. They never returned to their native lands. Others were stowaways. They jumped ship and hid in American communities. Human traffickers are well-paid to truck the undocumented across the duster. And Schenectady welcomes all? That's just the tip of the iceberg. Are the outsiders now making laws with the United States? What is wrong with the quota system? What is wrong with official asylum? What's wrong with the laws that maintain order? Tonight's resolution also states adhering to strong privacy protection. You all swore to uphold the Constitution. Do you know that the word "privacy" does not appear in the original document?
Please summarize, Mrs. McLean.
It was not in the founding fathers' lexicon. It was improper for a gentleman to go off by himself unless in prayer. The word was used to validate the abortion issue. I have been coming to these city council meetings for the last 38 years. I am thrilled to see all these people in this chamber, but I wish it was for another agenda.
Thank you. Ellie Pepper.
Good evening, Mayor, Madam President, City Council Members. My name is Ellie Pepper, and I live in Schenectady. To my great disappointment, this council has failed to pass a resolution that addresses any of the concerns repeatedly brought before you by a number of concerned residents. In discussion at the committee meeting last week, several council members disagreed with including, whereas the city of Schenectady is committed to protecting the civil and human rights of all individuals with the city, regardless of their zip code, race, religion, or immigration status, to the resolution because undocumented immigrants are breaking the law. First of all, are we a nation that believes everyone is entitled to basic civil and human rights, no matter what? Secondly, immigration status is a civil matter, not a criminal matter. Many immigrants enter the country legally every day on valid work or travel visas and end up overstaying for a variety of reasons. But that is not a violation of federal criminal law. It's a civil violation that gets handled in immigration court proceedings. Federal immigration laws are principally enforced through civil proceedings administered by the Department of Homeland Security and should not be carried out by our local law enforcement officers. I know it's been said over and over that our police department is not asking about immigration status. Let's make it part of the resolution and make it part of the public document. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe Eric may have signed up by mistake, but just in case, Eric McDowell? Vicki Michaela or Michellea? I'm not sure which.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Vicki Michellea, and I'm a resident of Schenectady County. Is that better? I too am deeply disappointed and saddened that the city council has refused to declare Schenectady a sanctuary city. Sanctuary is an action that people of integrity have taken throughout history to protect victims of human rights violations, whether they were escaped slaves or undocumented immigrants looking for a better life. Some come just as children, and recently, there was a dreamer, someone who came as a child, who was deported. And at other times in our history, states and municipalities chose not to provide sanctuary. For example, during World War II, when innocent Japanese-Americans were rounded up and sent to internment camps. This was during wartime and under a progressive administration. However, in hindsight, had they refused, I believe they would have been on the right side of history. Sometimes laws are wrong. It's just that simple, and we have to have the courage to stand up and say no, even if there's a potential cost to that. During the past few months, over 60 people have spoken up to advocate for Schenectady to declare it a sanctuary city, while only a handful have opposed it. I implore you to listen to your constituents. We are not going away because we're passionate about this issue. We're activists, and we are voters. But most of all, listen to your conscience. How often does the opportunity come along to be not just a witness to a historical movement, but an active participant in it? You, as members of the city council, have the chance to go on the record as standing up to injustice. Please do not squander this opportunity. Thank you again.
Thank you. Deb Retano. Deb Retano.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. As a longtime business owner and staunch Democrat here in Schenectady, I'm here to ask Schenectady to stand up for dignity and respect for all. Just want to remind you that the Statue of Liberty is just two and a half hours away from here. My own great-grandfather from Italy worked to build the Erie Canal, and my grandparents helped build St. Anthony's Church. As immigrants, they took seriously the opportunity they had to settle in Schenectady. They were filled with hope, filled with faith, filled with loyalty to this country. To the city council, I ask you what you're thinking. Stand up for all the people who reside here in Schenectady. Open your hearts and your doors to those who need sanctuary. As we watch the rising tide of anti-Muslim sentiment in our nation, as we listen to preposterous hate speech and rhetoric from political leaders around the world, and in particular, here in the U.S., and yes, here in the capital region, our hearts are ripped open. We have seen attacks on mosques, a travel ban, and a religious test to enter this country. Many years ago, Republican Mayor Al Jozinski took a leap and invited immigrants from Guyana to live in Schenectady. Walk up and down Crane Street, mind you, and see the businesses that are there. A kosher bakery owned by Italian immigrants, corner stores owned by Dominicans, restaurants owned by Asians, Burmese, and Muslims. Today is Yom HaShoah, the commemoration of the Holocaust. Your silence on sanctuary lacks compassion, dignity, and respect. It is an echo of those denials that rounded up the Jews, that broke the glass, that burned the books, that lit the fires, and finally dropped the gas that exterminated 6 million Jews. Immigrants are our neighbors. They're our doctors, our local merchants. They sit on the school board. They're our teachers, they're nurses. We know them as restaurant owners and soccer coaches, and policemen and women and public officials. We know them as mothers and fathers and caregivers, and as allies and colleagues and movements for justice and peace. They are us. This country is not America without them. Let us walk together into a future where racism, hate, and violence are relics of the past, where differences are celebrated, and our children inherit our sense of commitment, our love of each other, and our joy. And I call on the city council to reconsider and take a step forward Albany did.
I don't even want to follow that. So my name is Jamaica Miles, and as a reminder, I was born and raised in the city of Schenectady. I've lived here my entire life. I'm never leaving. I say that proudly because I believe that Schenectady made me with all the good, the bad, the indifferent. I am here, I am the person I am today because of the schools, the neighborhoods, the people that I've associated with, and the experiences that I've had. When the conversation happened last week about what type of resolution should be passed, and the need for comprehensive immigration reform became the dominant theme, I was sad, I was frustrated, I was angry, I was disappointed. Yes, we do need comprehensive immigration reform, there is no question about that. The federal government right now is failing us and failing all of our states and our residents and our citizens and our immigrants in their efforts by not addressing the issue. But it is not just on them to protect our residents. Saying that we don't need to talk about something or that we don't have a problem in this city doesn't mean that it's true. Putting all the responsibility on the federal government makes me wonder, then why do we have a city government? Because we have residents in this city, because there is a division of power between the city, the state, and the federal government. And each has responsibilities to the residents that live in this country, that work in this country. And just very quickly to point out that in 1910, the U.S. Census said that Schenectady was home to hundreds of thousands of alien immigrants, often in the U.S. for years. And their primary or only language was often Italian or Polish, and they worked for GE and ALCO. And they were here, and they were protected, and they had job security, and they lived their lives. So why would we now say it's the federal government's responsibility and not take responsibility ourselves? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor McCarthy, Madam President, council members. I was present at last week's meeting, and my comments relate to the resolution endorsing the need for comprehensive immigration reform. When I was present to hear your discussion, many council members expressed concern that they took an oath to uphold the Constitution. I wanted to quote Rabbi Matt Cutler, who has a blog at the Times Union. This was published in the TU on April 17th, and he writes, "Defining status is complex. Undocumented individuals are not criminals, and technically, they are not illegals. They are in the country unlawfully, which is not a crime." It seems like semantics, but there is a significant difference between illegal and unlawful. And I think that if we look at our history, our rich American history, there are so many examples of when lawful was not just slavery and the abolitionists. Women did not have the right to vote, and then there were the suffragettes. And then there was white supremacy and segregation, and then there were civil rights leaders. So this is another, I think, opportunity, and we can not just do what's lawful, but do what's just. Thank you.
Stephanie Bandozik.
Mayor, Madam President, council members. My name is Stephanie Bandozik. I live in Bellevue, and I want to first thank you, Marion Porterfield and Lisa Perazzo, for doing what you could to echo the voices of the constituents that you've heard coming to the mic week after week. I'm sorry that some of you don't even seem to be able to make eye contact with us, let alone return our calls or our emails, particularly when they're up for reelection. That's very disheartening. But I am encouraged that what I've heard echoed over and over tonight is people coming here to stand up for their community, whether it's youth, or seniors, or the arts. Mahatma Gandhi says that a nation's greatness is measured by how we treat our weakest members. Our youth, our elders, women, communities of color, disabled people, and certainly undocumented people who are living in our community, and certainly people who are at the risk of facing any kind of stigma, but particularly religious persecution in a nation that is continually bragging about being founded on religious freedom. So the fact that it would not be included in the official notes of our city, that we agree that we would not have a Muslim registry, is very disappointing. The fact that we would not agree officially on the record that our police officers will not ask for immigration status is very disheartening. And again, just because it isn't happening here yet, I heard it said at the meeting, well, we don't want to put our police in an uncomfortable situation should something change with the national government asking our police officers to do that. Now, that tells me that you wouldn't be willing to stand up for not having our police officers collect immigration status. And that means that if I am the victim of a crime, and the only person there to help me is an undocumented person, I may not get help, and you may not get help. And that includes your mothers, your wives, your husbands, your children. And I don't think that that's the kind of community that we want to live in. So I strongly support you reconsidering your language and taking a stand that is more reflective of the community members that you've been hearing from. Thank you.
Joy Harv.
I'm Joy Harv Schenectady. I say we need the sanctuary in Schenectady, but we also need to look at certain people who helped and worked on immigration in Schenectady, and name a street or something after that person. Princess, she worked hard trying to get things going. Got it going, got it passed. We need to keep the town sanctuary all the way. They need to name a street, anything after her, because she did a whole lot, working over the years, and put a lot of time in. And I want the sanctuary town all the way.
Thank you. I didn't do it again right, did I? You need to work on your handwriting.
My handwriting? Thank you very much, Mayor McCarthy, Madam President, and city council members. I too was very disappointed in the resolution that you chose to put forth tonight. I also wanted to say thank you to Councilwoman Porterfield and Councilwoman Perazzo for their resolutions, which was much more in line with their constituents. Perhaps one of the things I found most disappointing was not only did the resolution that you're putting forth for us tonight does not include any of the language that your more-than-60-now constituents have come here and asked you to include, but also you didn't even take the time to write your own, just adopting language from Orlando. I would never accept that for my students, I don't accept it for my city council. Last Monday...
If you can hold your applause, please, so she can have a full time.
Last Monday at the meeting, somebody said that a sanctuary city is a solution looking for a problem. Those in positions of privilege often tend to think problems that do not directly affect them do not exist. I am deeply disappointed that so many in the council have decided to retreat to their safe spaces and ignore what the rest of us see is a very serious problem with a fairly simple solution. If you don't like the term sanctuary city, the very least you could do is state publicly that the city of Schenectady is committed to treating people who are not citizens in a manner consistent with our values. As Councilwoman Porterfield said in her resolution, we could say that Schenectady recognizes that the enforcement of immigration laws is a function of federal enforcement agencies, and that residents, regardless of immigration status, should feel no barriers in reporting injury to crime. That seems like the least amount that you could... That seems like the least amount that you could do. It was also said on Monday that uh, we have an obligation to follow the Constitution. I agree, but following the Constitution does not mean standing by and being bullied by the federal government. That's not what it says in the Constitution that we have to do. Um, also following the Constitution does not mean that we simply ignore our residents, our non-documented residents. It does not give us the right to absolve our collective duty to figure out how to protect the most vulnerable citizens in our community. We can seek ways to do this without jeopardizing the well-being of the city and all of its residents, but in order to do that, there actually has to be a discussion, an open, honest, compassionate discussion, and not the dismissiveness that I saw on Monday. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no one else signed up to speak for this portion of the meeting, so I will declare it closed. And I will entertain a motion to approve, approve the legislative agenda. Move by Mr. Kozier, seconded by Mr. Mutiveren. All those in favor? Aye. And I will ask the clerk to reread Agenda Item Number Fifteen, which has been polled for our roll call vote.
Item Number Fifteen, a resolution endorsing the need for comprehensive immigration reform.
I'll ask for a motion. Move by Mr. Kozier, seconded by Mr. Palomini, and if the clerk would please call the roll.
Mr. Kozier?
Yes.
Ms. Porterfield?
Thank you. Um, as we all know, we've heard a lot of discussion and we've had a lot of discussion regarding this. Um, first of all, let me just clearly state that I certainly believe that we do need uh, um, we should ask the federal government for immigration reform, so I'm certainly completely on board with that. Uh, I know that we have a resolution before us, but I just really um, want to just be able to state um, what I've continued stated throughout our discussions and also to do some clarification um, on things that people have said to me outside of the chamber regarding like what they thought would happen if we declared ourselves a sanctuary city. Uh, let me also say, first of all, I clearly understand that if sanctuary, for some people sanctuary city is just a term that they just didn't feel comfortable with, and I understand that, and certainly we came up with other terms, fair and welcoming and other things. So if sanctuary city was the thing that said, oh, we can't, we can't be that, we offered other um, other options. Uh, one person said to me, they thought that if we became a sanctuary city, that that meant that would be an influx of people from other places who would just run here for um, for sanctuary. And uh, I clearly explained that that is not what the purpose is, that was not what um, it would, it would be about, and it would not be about just our borders just be burgeoning with people who felt they needed someplace to go because this was a safe place. First of all, there are other cities around here who have declared themselves a sanctuary city, so I, that wouldn't, isn't what the intent is or what um, what would probably, would happen. Um, also, someone else thought that we would be harboring criminals by, and by, because we'd be tying the hands of the police. And again, that it would not happen again. We all realize that if someone broke the law regardless of where they're from, that the police have a responsibility to do something about that. But simply we were just, uh, my, the resolution that I put forth was simply saying that when the police initially have contact with people, it would not be the first thing they did was to ask for their immigration status, which is something that's been stated that would, something police would not do, and I was simply asking for that to be included in the resolution. Um, one of the most troubling things to me that I've heard um, that the federal government want to do is to create a registry of people. Uh, that is just, I don't even have the words to say how much that, some, having something like that would, concerns me. And um, again, I would have liked to have this, that included in our resolution to say that we would not sign on to having a registry of people based on their religion or ethnic origin. So um, I understand that these, I know that these things are not included, but I just wanted to state that. And again, I support immigration reform, so I support this resolution. I, you know, it'd make no sense to speak out, to say, well, I can't support that because it doesn't include this. But I do need to, to state that I feel that we could have gone a little bit further and included those things and come to a consensus, an agreement of things that um, did not in anywhere, in any way create the city doing anything illegal, but simply said to our citizens who live here that we're a fair and welcoming city, um, and that we respect your ethnic background and all of those things. Um, so I would have liked to see that included. I do vote aye on this resolution, but I felt I needed to include those comments. Thank you.
Sorry, did you vote, Ms. Porterfield?
I voted aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Soluski Wolzonis?
Yes.
Mr. Palomini?
Yes.
Mr. Riggi?
Yes.
Mr. Mutiveren?
Yes.
Ms. Perazzo?
Um, I too want to clarify my vote because certainly I'm not looking to uh, not support comprehensive immigration reform. However, um, when I wrote my resolution, I purposely kept it quite general. I purposely wove in language from the previously presented uh, uh, resolution by my colleagues. I purposely presented something that was a starting point, so this council of seven people could come together in discussion to work together to find consensus on something everyone at the table felt comfortable with. My two deep disappointments are that number one, a portion of the council did not work with another portion of the council, nor did they even consider working with the other portion of the council. And secondly, that truly this council did not weave in the local voices of our residents. We are public servants. It is our responsibility to take the voice of our constituents, weigh that, and apply it to government as we know government. Clearly, sometimes there is a divide between what our residents would like and what we can actually apply to government. Not in this case. There were plenty of compromises we could have made. So I will again publicly state my deep disappointment in how this process was handled. Also, from the beginning, I shared a tremendous amount of information, some in support, some against, just in the um, method of creating conversation. So although I will vote yes for this resolution, um, I do believe this council has failed in this, in this matter, to fully discuss this issue. And now we will move on to privilege of-
The motion passes unanimously.
I'm sorry. And now we'll move on to privilege of the floor regarding general city business. I have nineteen people signed up to speak. I know that people feel very passionate about the subject we'll be discussing this evening. I welcome everyone, as I've said in the past, I welcome all um, opinions and, and, and passion and positions on whatever you're speaking to, but we do have a timed situation, so I will ask that you hold your applause while someone's speaking because number one, we can't always hear everything they're saying, and number two, they then have to yield some time. So um, I, I'm not, not trying to shut down your support, uh, just wanting to make sure that everyone has um, their full time to express themselves. So with that, forward we go, um, with Carl Jackson. Okay, signed up on the wrong sheet, very good. All right, Marva Isaacs.
Madam President, Mister Mayor, City Council. I just want to thank the mayor, Council President, Marion Porterfield, John Mutiveren, John Palomini for being there um, on Saturday night. It was a very good event and I thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Anthony Carrata.
Good evening, Mister Mayor, City Council, Madam President. Far as speaking, what I'm going to speak on, I'd just like to say I applaud and congratulate this council for shooting down the idea of sanctuary city. Cause I know you guys didn't want to lose the federal funding, so I congratulate that. And I also congratulate Mister Kozier for mentioning the Constitution and federal law with that. Now, unlike my fellow residents here who keep harping on the idea of sanctuary city and what have goes with it, I also know you brought up the idea of immigration reform. There's one key factor, if you will, that goes with it, other than hoppin' issues and topics today. That is the key factor of safety. Now, what I mean by safety is this, how is the law enforcement do the job? Besides the issue of what people have with law enforcement, whether it be the sheriff, police, what have you, any type of law enforcement, I know a lot of people have issues with that, but how is law enforcement going to do the job? As in what the Constitution says the county cannot do besides violating or basing race of human being with the law enforcement. The other is with the issue of sanctuary cities, what have you, we have a lot of unrest. Now, I understand people are upset with government, what have you, going out in the streets. When they do their unrest, they riot, they have total chaos and anarchy, they destroy public or private businesses. How are the people, the only businesses that get looted and destroyed supposed to recoup? And how is law enforcement supposed to protect the civilian population from this unrest? Okay, you got that issue with safety. The last one important, what I brought up last time, was about the schools. Now, where did I get that information? Judge Carroll, when she was talking about this, she was talking to a sheriff from Massachusetts and a mayor from Little Massachusetts dealing with immigration. The issue was the schools there in Maryland, where an undocumented person, fourteen years old, went to school there, met the capacity of third grade education, got raped in the school, in the restroom in the school. Now, we had these problems here with schools, here bullying, what have you, schools, places high on learning, situations, bullying, what have you, people getting raped in, in the schools, bathrooms. How are they supposed to keep safety for the faculty and students in the schools and public and the places high on learning? Key issue is safety. It's still the safety issue here with whether it be sanctuary city, immigration reform, what have you. Key issues of safety all around. Law enforcement, the businesses, schools and places high on learning, safety, key issue safety. Unlike what these people have been saying, they don't mind about the key issue of safety. They want to talk about dignity and respect, they don't respect themselves, let alone their fellow citizens. You want to hide behind the Constitution? Read the Constitution, read what it says. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary McLean.
She left.
Okay. Dave Chetram.
Madam Chair, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members, beloved brothers and sisters, a very, very good evening. My name is Daron Chetram, the Vice Chairman of Schenectady's Affirmative Action Advisory Board, and I'm honored and excited to extend a heartfelt gratitude to the mayor and the city council members who together worked to activate the Affirmative Action Advisory Board, which was deactivated for many years. Also, would like to compliment the magnanimous souls, the mayor and the council members, for approving the funds in the city budget for a full-time affirmative action officer and who moved expeditiously to fill that indispensable position, making this not only a magnificent and remarkable event, but a historical one. I'd like to thank the mayor especially, city council members, I'd like to thank you too, and especially Mayor Murphy for his continued support with us at our meetings. We would like to welcome the new affirmative action officer, one named Mister Ron Gardner. If anyone would like to meet him, he or she can do so on our annual presentation. On Thursday, April the twenty-seventh, at six thirty PM, we will be hosting a public presentation of our twenty sixteen annual report at the McChesney Room of the Schenectady's Public Library on Liberty Street. We would like to invite everyone, please come and be part of this great event, and also all our meetings, functions, and events to come. Thank you all very much. God bless this assembly, God bless the council, members of this county, and God bless America. Thank you all very much again.
Thank you. Vicky Michella. She left, okay. Justin Savoy.
Sorry, I didn't know what to sign up. Sorry, I didn't know what to sign up, I just came here for number twelve.
Oh, okay. You didn't want to speak.
Well, I was just wondering what's going on about my case.
It was passed on the legislative agenda, but we can't really have a back and forth. This is just for you to speak, so if you want to wait and talk to us after the meeting or talk to Corporation Council after the meeting, he can fill you in.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks. P D Voras.
Yeah, I'm still P D Voras. I want to remind you- Should I say that again? Um, I'm, you know, I'm still P D Voras. Uh, I want to remind you, this May Day is the anniversary of the fire on Hewlett Street that took the life of a father and three children. And um, I think it's a good time for all families in Schenectady to do a rehearsal at their homes on escape routes, just in case it should happen to them. Uh, things change, you know? So I wanted to suggest that. Several things have been said during this period of time. I have myself, Mister Neville pointed out that some churches that he's belonged to have done uh, work with families, and I have belonged at various times to two different denominations over the course of decades, and probably three different churches in which uh, we've taken in families, provided them with automobiles, jobs, uh, care for their children, uh, and, and every kind of help that they could need, uh, so that to support the family in their uh, new environment here and to, to feel like they belong to the community. And then Mister Sanders, Bob Sanders, uh, started talking about, he, he was rather disappointed that these people that are here now weren't showing up at other times for other issues that we have and that concern the lives of people in this community. And I wanted to point out that every politician, when he runs, seems to uh, talk about initiative by referendum, and it's always happening here. We had an initiative by referendum concerning a casino and everybody voted that they didn't want it. And then all of a sudden, we've got it here anyway, and they're breaking all kinds of uh, records subsidizing this activity. Um, this, these people are making a lot of money, uh, facade jobs, a lot of these buildings aren't, they had facade jobs, but they are not filled. And it's at the point after the demolition of the uh, building on um, on Erie and State, is there going to be anything left of Schenectady that's old? I think not. Uh, the First Bank is closing, Ellis Hospital Care, Eddie is closing, all these properties. And um, I really think um, this, you may be seeing all kinds of uh, houses being sold, habitat for humanity-
And you did a summarize, please, Ms. Voras.
But I think by the time you get through doing all this demolition, this may be a town being uh, sold for liquidation prices.
Thank you, Ms. Voras. Ellie Pepper.
Good evening again, Mayor, Madam President, City Council Members. Um, I'm Ellie Pepper and I still live in Schenectady. Uh, I'd like to give some historical background about the city of Schenectady and immigrants. Um, as Jamaica mentioned earlier, in, according to the nineteen-ten US Census, seventy-two percent of the Italians and sixty-two percent of the Poles in Schenectady were males, many of whom lived in boarding houses for years, retained Italian and Polish as their primary or only language, and made no attempt to become a US citizen. At that time, refusal to rent to an Italian or a Pole because of ethnic background was not uncommon. In Doctor Robert Pescucci's dictatorial dissertation- In Dr. Robert Pescucci's dictatorial dissertation, named Electric City Immigrants, Italians and Poles of Schenectady, New York, he reports that to prevent the more financially able from acquiring property east of Van Rankin, where substantial, attractive two-family homes were being constructed for German and Irish skilled and white collar workers, James Felthausen, a land developer, required his buyers to agree to a restrictive clause that read, "It is understood and agreed that the party of the second part is not to sell or convey said premises or any part thereof to any Polish, Italian person or persons." That was in 1906. More than 100 years later, Schenectady now celebrates Polish and Italian immigrants. I ask that you consider history and ensure that you are on the right side. In 100 years, I hope a doctoral dissertation can read that Schenectady joined other cities like Albany and state that to choose, that in states that they choose to stand up for immigrants, rather than one that allowed fear mongering and racism to dictate its actions. And once again, I'll repeat, federal immigration laws are principally enforced through civil proceedings administered by the Department of Homeland Security and should not be carried out by local law officers. Thank you.
Thank you. Dean Morabito.
Madam President, members of the council, and Mayor, I'm Dean Morabito, and I live in the city of Schenectady. I was fortunate yesterday to be able to attend the FCI Film Festival, held each year at Proctor's GE Theater, uh, which I would highly recommend to everyone when it comes around next year that you should attend that. I was very moved by a documentary film I watched there called Eyes of Ka, about two pre-teen girls living in a Syrian refugee camp, Ka, located near the Turkish border. One of the girls, Katia, had a dream to someday become a journalist, to report on the plight of children affected by war. While attending school in the camp, the school was bombed by the Syrian army, and Katia was killed. This immediately brought my mind to thinking about sanctuary and what it means to people living in different situations. Now, certainly here in this room, the vast majority of people here, if not all, will leave the building tonight, go to the place they call home, their sanctuary, and at some point, go to sleep feeling generally safe and secure with the thought that their lives will not be in jeopardy as they sleep. On the other hand, many thousands of refugees and immigrants do not have such a luxury, including those living in the city of Schenectady. These people don't have time to wait for immigration reform to move, to make them feel safe and secure, as suggested and encouraged by some of you on the City Council, as the means of addressing the issue of sanctuary cities. So as you settle into your comfy sanctuaries tonight, I pray my words stick in your mind regarding your choices, and maybe giving you pause to reconsider your thinking about people different from yourselves, people without your luxuries. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken S. Laxson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Madam President, members of City Council, uh, for your time. Uh, many of us here today are wondering why the Democratic-dominated Schenectady City Council would adopt a resolution on immigration drafted by an Orlando mayor with language straight out of the Republican platform. Why ignore the voices of your constituents? Why turn your back on the city's most vulnerable residents? The reasons I heard last Monday, we have, we took an oath to uphold the Constitution. We need to obey the laws of the land. Will these comments just lead me to the question that I have occasioned to ask my students? Have you done the reading? First of all, have you read Councilperson Porterfield's proposed resolution, where she specifically states that the city will not violate state or federal laws? Have you read that? If you had, you would know that. Have you read Eric Snyderman's Guidelines on Sanctuary Cities? If you had read it, you would know, on page two, that the Supreme Court ruled in 2012, as a general rule, it is not a crime for a removable alien to remain president, in, present in the United States. And most importantly, have you read this document, the Constitution? Because if you'd read the Constitution, you'd probably understand better the meaning of that oath that you swore to before you took office. Taking an oath to abide by the Constitution does not mean that you have to blindly follow and lockstep the marching orders of the executive branch of the national government. In fact, sometimes it means just the opposite, because you know who else took an oath to uphold the Constitution? President Trump. And judged by the fact that he has already had two executive orders outlining travel bans overturned as unconstitutional in less than 100 days, I'd say he has a pretty poor understanding of the Constitution. Jeff Sessions threatened actions to withhold funds from sanctuary cities and counties would also likely be deemed unconstitutional. Also in 2012, the Supreme Court ruled that the national government cannot coerce state and local governments into aiding in the enforcement of federal laws by withholding grant money. This, the court held, violates the Tenth Amendment, violates Article Four, and the general principles of federalism expressed in the Constitution. All of this makes me wonder, can I trust you to do your homework before making decisions on behalf of the city? Some politicians see the Democratic Party as simply a vehicle for personal gain without any sense of who or what the party should stand for, but today's voting Democrat is going to hold his politicians and office holders accountable. And if you are more concerned with what the local party can do for your political career than you are with what you, as a public servant, can do for your community, then we don't want you on City Council or holding any other public office.
Good evening, everyone. I like to say I'm a Union College student, so I'm not a voting resident, but just now I have a lot of friends who have a lot of energy, and they like organizing behind candidates they support, so just keep that in mind. I also like to point out that as a Union College student, I'm very happy that a resolution on a hockey game was much more detailed than the one on immigration that's supposed to protect all the citizens of this council. At the last meeting, uh, Councilmembers Kojic and Riggi both announced their duties to carry out the laws of the Constitution, even though they failed to thank the people who allowed them to take that oath. Now luckily, because of professors like S. Laxson, I have read the Constitution a lot. And let me read you a passage from the U.S. Constitution. "No person held to service of labor in one state, under the laws thereof, escaping to another shall, in consequence of any law or regulation therein, be discharged from such service or labor, but shall be delivered upon claim of the property to whom such service or labor may be due." And this is simply known as the Fugitive Slave Clause. So let me pose you this question. Suppose the year is 1817, how did the two City Councilmembers respond to slave catchers arriving in Schenectady and the demanding the return of an escaped slave? The Constitution clearly states escaped slave would not be granted his freedom by fleeing to Schenectady, and his masters had every legal right to bring him back. The, the resolution and the actions of the several City Councilmembers is simply a progressive mystique. It is a facade that on face value appears to do good, but in all actuality does very little to protect the residents of the city. A similar instance occurred in Greensboro, North Carolina in 1954, following the ruling in Brown v. Board of Education, which held that racial segregation of children in public schools violated the equal protection clause of the Fourteenth Amendment. Greensboro, being ahead of the time, became the first southern city to announce their plans to desegregate their schools, yet they were one of the last cities in 1971 to actually desegregate their public schools. And why? Because they created a public disguise of progressivism and refused to actually support all their residents. They placed the burden of legislation on the shoulders of others and refused to do their duty as public servants. This is exactly what the proposed resolution is, a feeble facade, and I warn you, a feeble facade cannot withstand the weight of a ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie Vendoza.
So, I'm sure you all know about Kathy Sheehan, Albany mayor, and her executive order. Uh, she says, "I am committed to ensuring the equity and social justice, and that they guide all city of Albany decisions," and this executive order is an example of that commitment. Surely Albany cannot be more progressive or committed than Schenectady. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. said, "Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. We are caught in an inescapable network of mutuality, tied in a single garment of destiny. Whatever affects one directly affects us all indirectly." And Martin Niemoller, a prominent Protestant pastor who spent the last seven years of Nazi rule in concentration camps for speaking out against Adolf Hitler, said, "First, they came for the socialists, and I did not speak out because I was not a socialist. Then they came for the trade unionists, I did not speak out because I was not a trade unionist. Then they came for the Jews, I did not speak out because I was not a Jew. Then they came for me, and there was no one left to speak for me." Now, we claim that we have separation of church and state. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I do believe that when we swear our oath of office, we swear it traditionally on a Bible. The Bible that says, "No stranger had to spend the night in the street, for my door was always open to the traveler. Do not oppress a foreigner. You yourselves know how it feels to be foreigners, because you were foreigners in Egypt. When a foreigner resides among you in your land, do not mistreat them. The foreigner residing among you must be treated as your native-born. Love them as yourself. When you reap the harvest of your land, do not reap to the very edges of your field or gather the gleanings of your harvest. Do not go over your vineyard a second time, or pick the grapes that have fallen. Leave them for the poor and the foreigner. For the entire law is fulfilled in keeping this one commandment: love your neighbor as yourself."
Thank you. Michelle Hackett.
Thank you. I, um, I imagine you're probably getting tired of seeing me and hearing from me, and I think that everybody else has spoken so eloquently, um, but I guess I'm just here, you know, in spirit to say, as many others have said tonight, we're not going away, we don't feel heard, and I feel that this has been such a, an educational experience for me. I mean, previously, I would, you know, I'd vote for you all because you were Democrats, I did not know who you were. Now I know who you are, and, um, I feel like we're waking up a little bit, and it just, I'm, I'm very disappointed. Um, we have come for months, and you've heard us speak, and I felt ignored, and I think others have as well, and I want to thank Mrs. Parasso in Porterfield for your comments tonight. Um, that is like the light in the darkness. Um, while maybe this was a transparent process, it felt opaque to me. It felt like there are a few people off to the side deciding how things were going to be, and then kind of, kind of pushing their agenda and not having conversation, which is extremely disappointing. And, um, I've said this before, and I'll say it again, it's time for us to start getting to work on some campaigns. With all due respect, I totally appreciate your very good work. I know it's extremely complex, but I feel that we can definitely do better. Thank you.
Sean Pennella.
Hello. Give me a second. Hello, I'm Sean Pennella from Schenectady, New York. I'm here today as an observer from my, uh, my life walk from my eyes only, and I came for, to share some ideas to, to share my ideas to others for them to share their, my idea, correction, start over again. I'm, I am an observer. My walk's life is to share my ideas to others for them to share their, my ideas to other people. Okay, I'm just gonna get away from that. All right. I'm here to talk to you as, um, as an advocate of Schenectady Community College. Um, I had a disability, that I just dissed myself with, okay, um, but I shared my ideas, and, um, I learned from my disability, and I graduated from it, and, uh, and, uh, that's what helped me became an advocate, that became a public speaker, and I think the more you get nervous, the more you make mistakes, the more it comes from your heart. So I wanted to share something I also shared at the Governor's Office in the Capitol, they had Autism Week with Angelo Santa Barbara, and they had a whole committee of different professionals from different groups, and I shared this idea, and I was inspired by all of them, all different companies, to share with you guys here. I also shared in Albany, too. And that is Anthony Ferrota's idea of hip to talking about crime. And yes, we're, we're disturbed by very bad stories. Don't worry, I already got his permission as part of my story. Um, this is sort of hype. Um, just joking. The purpose I want to say is, a lot of cops don't, are here to, are here to, um, convict, uh, to, um, observe, report, deter, and, um, not, and, you know, and they're not educated in how to learn how a person reacts. Angelo Santa Barbara has also, um, came up with ideas along with a local police department, and that was to have a person's whereabouts, if they can't find where they are, they, um, they have a card that describes where they need to be. My idea is to go beyond that, and it's really hard to, um, explain that without invading their privacy or invading, you know, because they learn different from us, and to be accidentally stereotyped. And that ain't my goal. My goal is to add on to that card so they know how, so they know how to approach them, so they know that they're not, that they can observe, and edu, and the police officers can be educated and be understood how to treat people, because sometimes key phrases bring key flashbacks, you know, wrong wording, wrong tone of voice can get an accidental result, and that's what, I believe I shared my point. Thank you.
Thank you. Jamaica Miles.
Good to get up and run. Um, so a couple of things, and I forgot last time, because I, you know, just had a lot in my mind. I, I did want to share the executive order, um, from Mayor Sheehan for the city of Albany policing regarding community policing and protection of immigrants, as well as, uh, the city of Albany's stances on human rights, immigration status, and the environment in light of recent divisive and destructive rhetoric espoused in the 2016 presidential campaign. So, happy for you guys to have for yourselves, in case you haven't already seen it, um, that does include language that is completely inclusive, it's not just about immigration. It also talks about, climate change is real, it talks about making sure that all individuals, regardless if they are immigrants or have disabilities, that they feel safe and protected. Uh, additionally, here are a minimum of 70 signatures, here you go, um, of individuals, some of them were here tonight, but many of them were not. So there's 70 more individuals that said Schenectady should be a sanctuary city, or call it something else, welcoming and affirming, whatever have you, um, and make sure that all residents are feeling as if they are safe. On April 11th, the Martin Luther King Jr., um, wow, that just went away, that's not fair. Um, we'll just go from it. So we, we dedicated a street in the name of Martin Luther King Jr., and many, if not all of you, stood there and stood next to that sign and said, yes, this is the right thing, this is a man that we need to look up to, we, we dedicate ourselves to his legacy. It, it's worthy of us to name a, a street to have that recognition. What would Martin Luther King Jr. say about us not standing up and offering sanctuary to all? Would he be standing on the side saying, no, we have no reason to stand up and say that all people are protected and safe and deserve dignity and respect? Or would he be standing on the side going, what are you talking about? Why should we be talking about racial injustice? Why should we talk about the segregation that still exists? Why should we talk about the fact that the federal government is targeting immigrants? If you stood next to a sign of a man who fought his entire life and literally gave his life for civil justice, for human rights, and to be against the racial segregation that still existed while he lived, then how could you stand today or sit in this room and not feel as if there is a point to even make any mention of this city being a safe haven for the residents who live here, those who are immigrants, those who are black or are Muslim or Jewish, those who have disabilities? How could you sit here today, but you stood next to that man's sign just a few weeks ago? That's all.
Thank you. Patricia Smith.
Good evening, Madam President, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers.
Good evening, Madam President, Mr. Mayor, council members. Pat Smith, Mount Pleasant Neighbor Association. I’m going to give an announcement tonight. I would like to remind and invite all the members of the Mount Pleasant community that the Mount Pleasant Library Branch will have an open house and a community conversation this Wednesday, April 26, 6:00 p.m. The library needs the input of the community. They want to know what we would like to have. We are envisioning a literacy center that is going to be a big deal for us. It will also, this library will change not only the face of the neighborhood, hopefully it will change the attitude. It’ll be a safe haven. It’ll also encourage knowledge and education, which is something that we need in Mount Pleasant. And I hope that this library will help with the Mount Pleasant Neighbor Association mission to put the Pleasant back in Mount Pleasant. So we are asking everyone to please, in our community, to stop in, let us know what you need. It’s important because it’s your community. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I’m going to do the right thing this time. Crisanna Scheider. I’m trying.
Thank you, Madam President, Mayor McCarthy, and members of the City Council. My name is Crisanna Scheider. I’m a resident at Schenectady, and now that we have a resolution endorsing the need for comprehensive immigration reform, I’d like to encourage you to consider making Schenectady a sanctuary city. I think the council, I do thank the council for agreeing to discuss last Monday the possibility of making Schenectady a sanctuary city. I remember about a month ago, Councilwoman Palamene had said that what we want is not a discussion, but of an actual resolution. Well, that is true, but we really did want a discussion. That was not just lip service. And what followed was not a discussion, as we’ve already talked about. Two members of the council, Councilwomen Parazzo and Porterfield, wrote up thoughtful resolutions with language that was intended to address the concerns of more than 60 of us have raised the past couple of months. And that’s just the people that have been coming to speak. I know that there are more. But their proposals seem to be dismissed without much consideration, if any at all. So I suppose what I was expecting was for council members to discuss the number of studies that show sanctuary cities are in fact safer than non-sanuary cities, that they actually are more economically prosperous. I thought that someone would come with exact numbers as to how much the city could lose if Schenectady declared itself a sanctuary city. After the last public meeting, I examined Schenectady’s budget and looked into the two grants Councilwoman Palamene said we would lose if the Department of Justice were to pull our federal grants. From what I could tell, most of the federal grants do not seem to come from the Department of Justice, although I did look at the two that you had mentioned. Rather, it looks like the biggest grant that we rely on comes from the Community Development Block Grant, which we’ve already heard a lot about tonight and does wonderful things. But that grant is not from the Department of Justice. Now granted, this administration is unpredictable. Of course, they could try to pull all of our grants, but we can’t really just shake in our boots about what they might do. I mean, that is like the, that’s the personality of an abusive partner. So we can’t just say that we’re not going to do anything because we’re afraid we’re going to lose grants. And as already mentioned, that grant, the CDBG, is already being up, is already up for elimination in the 2018 budget. Now, that doesn’t mean that we don’t care about it, but it also means that it’s hardly a sure thing. So what I was expecting was that kind of discussion. We’ve been listening to you. I’ve heard what you said. Every time you give me information, I go back, I do my research. That’s what I do. I expected you to do the same. I heard from Councilwoman Riggi that we, that he had people call him and say that they did not agree with the sanctuary cities, well, let’s talk to those people. You’re problem solvers. You’re here to solve problems. You can figure this out. The only reason, you said that you’re not afraid of undocumented immigrants, but you also must not be very concerned about them. And you also must not care much about your constituents, these constituents that have been here for weeks, who are taking the time out of our lives to come to these meetings, armed with information, argument, and pleas. If you care, you will start talking to us, have a discussion, a real discussion. Thank you.
Dale Miller.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam President, City Council. My name is Dale Miller. I’ve been a city resident for 19 years. I read all three proposals that address the issue of declaring Schenectady a sanctuary city, and I’m extremely impressed with Councilwoman Porterfield’s proposal. Councilwoman Porterfield has my attention. Councilwoman Porterfield has my respect. Councilwoman Porterfield has my deepest admiration, and she has my full support. Thank you.
I have no one else signed up to speak, so I will declare privilege of the floor closed, and we will move on to miscellaneous business of the council. Ms. Luski Wodzunas.
Thank you. I just want to thank Councilmember Mutu Varan for organizing another Mount Pleasant meeting with business owners to discuss the redevelopment that’s going on in Crane Street around Mount Pleasant. The meeting’s going to be at the Bridge Street Church on May 11th. John’s focused on this area as all of we are, and I appreciate his leadership and his commitment to being involved in this whole process. I also want to thank Pat Smith for coming tonight and noting that, you know, there is a meeting on Wednesday at the library to discuss the Mount Pleasant Library Redevelopment Project. I also wanted to highlight the fact that, you know, we’d like to repeal the fireworks permits. I know the county is having a vote coming up, I think in another week, and we’d, I’d be very, very supportive of the county repealing all of the fireworks. Lastly, this community has lost a great leader this past week. Chuck Steiner was a visionary. He arrived in Schenectady over 15 years ago, embracing this community of Schenectady. Chuck Smile would light up a room. He was a humble gentleman. He was a great husband, father, and grandfather. Chuck was a friend to all. He loved the chamber and his community. He had many passions, but there are two that certainly do stand out. Chuck was in awe of small business owners. He said that they were the lifeblood of the community, from the dry cleaner on Upper Union Street to the cabinetmaker out on Freeman’s Bridge Road, to the many new companies that Chuck participated with ribbon cuttings throughout the city, the county, and beyond. Chuck was also an avid supporter of the military, especially the 109th Airborne stationed at Stratton Air Base. He organized numerous events at the base, bringing the local business owners and military personnel together. He was also the ultimate promoter of our military, from our annual airplane poll to having the annual Veterans Breakfast, where every November, we honored all active duty and retired military personnel. This is what Chuck did, promote and support businesses and our military. There have been many tributes to Charles P. Steiner over the last week, and I’m sure we’ll continue to hear more great stories about Chuck and his wonderful impact on this great community. Chuck will be missed. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Porterfield.
Thank you. First of all, I’d like to thank everyone that came out tonight to speak on the various topics, for the folks that continue to come and to voice their concerns, opinions, and, you know, just to talk to us. And I personally don’t think we can rule out having that community conversation. We’ve been having a lot of them, as I’ve stated before. To the folks who came out for the CDBG request, know that we will be, you know, taking a look at that and considering the request, and I appreciate the work of all the organizations that do things in Schenectady. I know that some will be funded and some won’t, but just to know that we, well, I personally appreciate all the work that goes into helping our citizens in various ways. So we can look forward to having those discussions and making those recommendations. I only wish we had money to fund every proposal that came in, but unfortunately, let me just say right now, that’s not how much money we have. We all know that. I appreciate the fact that we were able to pass the resolution for the Oak Street Bridge. I’m so sorry that Tony Benone’s not here tonight. I was looking for him and hoping he’d be here. He can’t take it? Okay, well, let’s get it done, and then he can come in. After it’s all done, he’ll be the first person that goes across the bridge. How about that? So sorry to see him, but I think that we can get this done, and I appreciate the work that Mr. Wallen has been doing in moving this forward, and also the support that we’ve been getting from our state government. I also want to acknowledge the passing of Chuck Steiner. I knew him for a number of years. He was a very, very wonderful man, did a lot of work, and was really very unassuming, but was just kind to everyone, and just a really wonderful person to be around. He had a really great presence, a very kind spirit. So my condolences to his family. There’s a couple of announcements that are for things that are coming up this week, specifically on this coming Thursday. There’s a community meeting to discuss the Joseph Allen Apartments on Albany Street. DePaul Properties will be here, as well as SCAP, and myself to discuss employment opportunities. People can talk about getting applications to actually live there in the fall. Hopefully, they will be completed this, and people will be able to actually move in. The meeting’s going to be held this Thursday from 5:00 to 6:30 at the Harmony Fellowship Church, which is on Albany Street, on the corner of Albany and Hamlin. So people can come out and, you know, be a part of that discussion, ask any questions that they have. Immediately following that meeting, they can attend the Affirmative Action Advisory Board meeting, which has been announced, which will be at 6:30 at the McChesney Library. So I think if you attend both and you’re five minutes late down to the library, it’ll be okay. So I encourage people to come out to the Affirmative Action Advisory Board meeting. They’ve been doing a lot of work in the last couple of years, and just want to share with the public and also hear what the public has to say about their concerns and needs. So thank you very much.
Mr. Koher.
Thank you, Madam President, and excuse my voice. We were way at Pittsburgh for the weekend and caught a cold, unfortunately, in the air-conditioned rooms. But again, I want to thank everybody for coming here this evening and speaking out on behalf of sanctuary cities. And again, to continue possibly the conversation, we moved on a resolution that I think is certainly very, very important to us, and I think it’s just, again, something that we want to continue to hear the public on and work with them. I, too, want to express my condolences to Chuck Steiner and his family, and perhaps as a council here, we can even work on a Chuck Steiner way, Madam President, something to honor Mr. Steiner with. He has just certainly turned this entire city and the county around, has been a great contributor, and perhaps we can put it on our agenda next week to even talk about that and discuss that. Summer jobs, this is the final week for applications for a summer youth employment program. The application deadline is this Friday, and they have to be in at SGHEA, the Schenectady County Job Training Agency, which is at 797 Broadway. The applications are still available at our high schools and middle schools. Check with the guidance officers. You could also find them online with the county website. But it’s a wonderful opportunity for our youth here, not only in the City of Schenectady, but the county, ages 14 to 21. You’ll make about $1,200 this summer, working at various local businesses and parks and agencies throughout the entire community. So please, applications are coming in slow, believe it or not. We always get the big rush at the end, but we encourage anybody, our local churches, any organizations that we deal with, any folks that we know. I’m going to put it back on Facebook tomorrow, just as a reminder. The documents that are key, again, are the working papers card that they need, a copy of their birth certificate, a copy of their social security card, and a copy of the report card. And that is, the reason for the report card is just for simply proof of residence in the county. We tell the kids that we’re always looking at their grades and attendance just to scare them a little bit, but it’s actually for proof of residence. And my last announcement, the Woodlow Neighbor Association is meeting this Wednesday as well. We are meeting at 7:00 p.m. at the Ancient Order of Hybernians Hall, right on State Street, and we are going to have folks from the school board, the Board of Education will be there, discuss their upcoming budget that they are submitting, and we’re also going to have our school board candidates in our audience as well to answer questions and answers if they have. And so again, that’s open to the public, 7:00 p.m. this Wednesday. Thank you.
Other council business. Mr. Palamene.
First and foremost, our prayers go out to the victims of the Green Street fire this morning. I understand there was one person who died, and several who have been injured and lost their belongings as well as residents. So we do think of those individuals. In regards to CDBG funds, there is a proposal by the federal government to cut that by half, so we encourage our residents to call their representatives at the federal level to go against that cut, something that’s very important to us as a city. They provide a lot of necessary funds for a number of programs that are important throughout the city, as we’ve heard tonight. In regards to sanctuary city discussion, there’s been a systematic misinformation campaign. It’s been said, let’s end bigotry, racism, and hatred. So are we to understand that these don’t exist in sanctuary cities like San Francisco, Los Angeles, New York, or Chicago, the murder capital of the world? There has been inferences that illegal aliens are like slaves. The two issues couldn’t be more different. Illegal immigrants come to the United States on their own volition, whereas slaves were forced to come here against their will, without a choice. Martin Luther King Jr. has been brought up by proponents of sanctuary cities as if he would support their cause. However, perhaps the two closest people to Dr. King, his wife Coretta Scott King and Clarence Jones, have shown some disagreement. Mrs. King in the 1990s asked Congress to reconsider a proposal that would eliminate or reduce penalties on companies that employed illegal aliens because of their impact the repeal might have on African-American or Hispanic workers. Clarence Jones makes a similar argument about economic competition for the labor market. Furthermore, Mr. Jones has stated that Dr. King was a backer of Cesar Chavez, one of the earliest campaigners against open borders. And Reverend Ralph Abernathy, who took over as head of the Southern Christian Leadership Conference after Dr. King was murdered, marched with Chavez in protest against illegal immigration over its effects on wages and weakening of unions. Let’s be clear, both Mrs. King and Mr. Jones are not in opposition to legal immigration, rather calling for immigration reform so illegal aliens can normalize their status. Mr. Jones states that he thinks Dr. King would say the following to illegal aliens: “If you’re in this country illegally, have you come here in order to protest what you consider an unjust law? If you haven’t, then for whatever other reason you’re here, even if it’s to make money for your sick child, which is as good a reason as any, then you’re just violating the immigration laws of this country and deserve no more consideration from the authorities than does a thief.” Now again, let’s be very clear. The fact is, none of us, whether you support sanctuary city status or not, knows what Dr. King would say. He was murdered and taken from us far too early, and we have no idea what his position would be. Some have claimed sanctuary cities are biblical, talking about cities of refuge. However, a city of refuge authorized under Mosaic Code as part of Israel’s justice system were places where someone who had committed involuntary manslaughter, that’s without intent or unknowingly, could flee and find safety until the day of their trial, avoiding vigilante justice. The purpose was to make sure the rights of due process for the accused were observed, working with law enforcement, not against it. One must also take care as to different types of immigrant discussed in the Bible. For example, the Bible verses often cited by proponents refer to the sojourner. However, in Hebrew, this is a, and I’m going to mispronounce it, ger or jur, which is a foreigner which can partake in Passover. Not any foreigner could celebrate Passover, and those which could not were the nekker foreigner in Hebrew. Therefore, the jur can be likened to a naturalized citizen, to those who have religiously, philosophically, ceremonially, and legally joined Israel. Moreover, as Romans 13:1 through 7 states honor authority. There have been arguments that federal funding could not be cut from a sanctuary city. This is factually incorrect. Under its spending power, Congress may attach conditions on the receipt of federal funds as per Article 1, Section 8, Clause 1 of the Constitution. This has been upheld by U.S. courts. This includes the power to condition grant of federal funds, quote, “upon the states taking certain actions that Congress could not require them to take. Such measures encourage a state to regulate in a particular way. These conditions must be unambiguous, so state and local jurisdictions know what it is getting into. The conditions must be related to the federal interest in the particular national projects or programs that are being funded, likely limiting the action to immigration and law enforcement funding. And Congress must not cross the point at which pressure turns into compulsion. This is often defined as a loss of money that doesn’t approach 20% of the budget.” Such conditions exist, as Representative Steve King regularly places an amendment to Commerce, Justice, and Science Appropriations Bills that blocks grants from the Justice Department to local Department to local law enforcement agencies and cities and counties engaging in sanctuary city status. Congressman Lou Barletta has introduced the Mobilizing Against Sanctuary Cities Act, which will stop all federal funds to state or localities which resist or ban enforcement of federal immigration laws, or flatly refuse to cooperate with the immigration officials. This is now in subcommittee. Representatives John Colberson has routinely sought to cut off DOJ funds to sanctuary jurisdictions, and others have introduced legislation, as well as Andy Harris and Duncan Hunter. There have been comments that the number of people coming to our meetings speak on, speaking on sanctuary cities has been more than for any other issue. This is just not true. An examination of the records show that the debate in the casino and for certain CDBG funding meetings at times have had more people. There have been insinuations that immigrant, immigrants that moved to Schenectady in the early 1900s were often illegal. However, what isn't said is that immigration laws were much different. There were no requirements for obtaining a visa prior to arriving. They simply arrived at a port of entry, they were inspected, and allowed in the country unless they came into an excluded category. Immigration policy changed with the passage of the Immigration Act of 1924, and immigration policy has evolved since. There have been numerous other comments that have been incorrect as well. Words such as immigrant have been co-opted, so as to make people think that there are those of us that are anti-immigrant. Nothing could be further from the truth. Immigrants have played a vital role in the development of Schenectady and are integral to our community. However, there is a difference between legal immigrant and an illegal immigrant. I've received numerous communications from immigrants that have come here illegally. They say, "Don't let those people and the two council members in favor of sanctuary cities diminish the hardship that we have to undertake to become citizens." They say, "We are the same as illegal aliens," when they use the term immigrant. "We came here legally and went through the process." "Why are they doing this?" they ask. Often, the conversation ends in tears, asking, "Who is sticking up for us?" To those individuals, I say those of us bringing forward the immigration reform resolution, stand shoulder to shoulder with you, and hand to hand. We thank you for your contribution to our country and our city. We know the hardships you endured to become citizens, the family you have left behind, and thank you for coming to our country legally and respecting our laws. If you are here illegally, please know that there are resources available to help you get legal status. We encourage you to use these resources, gain legal status, and come out of the shadows. Article 6 of the Constitution, the Supremacy Clause, states, "This Constitution and the laws of the United States, which shall be made in pursuance thereof, and all treaties made or which shall be made under the authority of the United States shall be the supreme law of the land, and the judges of every state shall be bound thereby, anything in the Constitution or laws of any state to the contrary notwithstanding." Immigration law is the authority of the federal government. We have a rule of law. We cannot pick which laws we follow as if they are a buffet. If we did, we would have chaos. No rule of law leads to anarchy. If you go to a foreign country, you would have to obey their immigration procedures and laws. If you have entered the United States illegally, no matter what the reason, you have done nothing to counter that illegality. If you want the law changed, there's a process to do so. You can demand that the federal government do its job and undertake immigration reform. And that's why we passed our resolution for comprehensive immigration reform. Thank you.
Other council business. Mr. Mayor.
Madam President, thank you. Appreciate everyone again coming down and expressing their opinions. Also like to formally express my sympathy to Marcy Steiner and Chuck Steiner's family and friends. Was a great advocate for this community, for the region, and it was just an extremely sad event to have him taken so early in his life. We did have a fatal fire last night on Green Street. Sympathy goes out to the victim there and those other individuals that were displaced. Compliment the work of the Schenectady Fire Department, which really did a tremendous job in terms of containing a fire that upon arrival had three buildings involved. The building where the fire originated, we're gonna demolish tomorrow. Cottage Row sustained minor damage and will be repaired. The adjacent exposure building to the, where the fire originated, did have extensive damage, but it's a building that the city has been working with, with the land bank, and is one of the grants from the Attorney General's Office that was recently approved. And even though the costs are gonna go up, they believe that they can still save that building, so we will not demolish that tomorrow. But the land bank and other contractors are gonna work together to, again, restore that and get it back so it's rentable or occupiable, and will add value to the neighborhood. Thank you, Madam President, for the opportunity to address the group.
Thank you. I also can't really be said enough, want to recognize the passing of our chamber president. I worked side by side with Chuck for five years, and he taught me, taught me a lot, and really helped shape my professional career, and, and he was just a great guy. And if you really, if you don't know Chuck, or you didn't know Chuck, read Rabbi Cutler's tribute to Chuck, because it really beautifully captures his personality, and, as well as his, his services on Saturday, they were just, they were extremely meaningful. I do want to congratulate the Seat Center, which is the home of Youth Build. They had a very successful open house last week, so they've gotten some well-deserved recognition of late, and we want to wish them continued success moving forward. It's a great program. Also Marty's True Value on Van Franken, which is now being run by the third generation of their family, just undertook a huge remodel, and so they had a ribbon cutting last week. We want to congratulate them. Certainly thrilled is, is an understatement that the county is considering repealing the fireworks law. The council originally passed a legis, legislation asking them to do so in July of 2016. We reaffirm our support of that by passing the resolution tonight. So I'm just, it really, can't, I feel very strongly about it, so I'm really happy about that. Also, our annual, the annual Pride Walk is scheduled for this Saturday, April 29th. Everyone is welcome, so if you wish to show your support or walk, there'll be a gathering at Union College's Memorial Chapel at noon this Saturday. And with that, I think we can wrap it up for the night. Thanks, everyone, for coming out, and I will ask for a motion to adjourn, moved by Ms. Porterfield, seconded by Ms. Zaluzki Wodzunas. We are all in favor. Aye, we are adjourned.
I said 9:30.
Did you?
So it isn't like 9:30? 9:34?
You probably had a preview of John's tour.
No, yeah, no, I stretched my words out. I wasn't saying anything. Right, he called nine minutes.